Order the mid-month meeting, April twenty first. If you would, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a moment of silence, please. All right, thank y'all. A couple of changes on the agenda before we approve on down to section D, general business. Item two, we'll take that out, farmers market MOU. We will take that out and then on down on number six. A request for the hospital, we'll take that one out too. Other than that, it stands as is, could I hear a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
I'm sorry, you have to bear with me, back up and what was that? Who made the motion?
I do accept with the with the subtract of the farmer's market and number two and number six comes out.
All right.
And it stands as is and a motion was made to approve the changes and it was five oh vote.
We have a rookie today.
That's right.
I wasn't thinking, I was just scooping along.
Just glad you're here.
Okay, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone has any comments or anything they'd like to say, please come forward.
Hello, my name's Michelle McMillan. I'm a native of Allegheny County. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. And I'm here today to rise in gratitude for the veterans that helped me recover from opiate use disorder. And this is my story. Excuse me, I'm really nervous. If you don't mind, can I pass out these papers?
Try to hold the comments to about three minutes if you can.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Michelle, you can just relax, we're just we're just we're just regular people, okay? Honestly, we're just regular folks. Just relax.
So I guess I'll just read the abstract from the doctor who was a veteran who treated me. So opiate use disorder affects an estimated twenty-six out of eight million people globally. In 2020, opioid overdose visits to the United States increased by twenty-eight percent. Opioid-dependent individuals now comprise a internationally and nationally recognized vulnerable population. Effective proven and safe treatments for OUD are needed to improve quality of life and life expectancy. And to decrease and accelerated newer regulation is internationally recognized protocol for treatment of OUD. It has been a study to retrospective review conducted by a team of healthcare providers based on the medical record documentation of patient patients who underwent the A and R procedure. I'm one of those. I had to travel outside my community, out of the country. And no one should have to go outside of their community in search of help. This study is a retrospective review conducted by a team of healthcare providers based on the medical record documentation of patients who underwent the A and R procedure and subsequent follow-up care at the A and R clinic. Stability was selected as the criteria to evaluate the procedure safety. The results of this study assessed a sample group of patients treated with the A and R procedure. The sample group consisted of fifty individuals who underwent the A and R procedure between November twenty twenty and February of twenty twenty-one. All patients treated during the period were included in the sample size. No exclusions were applied and the conclusion was the study analysis analysis demonstrates that A and R procedures are safe and effective. Excuse me. Does anybody have any questions? If you're seated at this table and you're discussing the needs of a certain group of people and there you look around this room and you see nobody in that group, I I'm cautious about what your conclusions are. But this is the data produced from those medical procedures. And Mr. Shepley, welcome to the board. Welcome to Sparta. We're glad to have you here, we like the words that you use, collaboration that you would partner with A and R to have help come to Allegheny County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Close, anybody else seeing none, we'll close public comment. Move on down to consent agenda, Ms. Rita Miller, tax management. Multitasking today. Yep.
Any questions on any of them?
Again, question? Ever question? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor? I will. Presentation to the board, Ms. Robin Hamilton. Financial update.
I've placed a copy of everything down for you guys. The year-to-date revenue is eighteen million, six hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. That represents almost ninety percent of the budget year. The expenditures are sixteen million, nine hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twelve cents. And that represents almost eighty percent of our expenditures for the year. And we're into the budget year about eighty percent. The bank balances are there for check-ins and savings. Is there any questions about them?
Looks good. Looks good.
Good.
Okay, and then the sales tax is also in your information. It's one from July till now and then last year of July till now, that has the different numbers, you can see the tax. The sales tax broke out with that quarter of a percent too. Do you have any questions on yet?
One more question. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good report, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Fieldies update, Mr. Davis Foster.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Board, thank you for this opportunity. We've had a few things go on since we last met here at the administration building, our door here adjacent to the commissioners' meeting room. The servo motor went out there, that's been replaced since and is now very smooth, it's it's a lot better than it than it was. So it's working like it's supposed to be. At the courthouse, if you've noticed a few things, it's changing around the courthouse. So we see that the walkout front, the walkway and the steps are in, they've got the cap on the wall and on the the step side rails, those things are in. They're going towards putting in the rock so that the rock matches the wall and get that all back completed like it needs to be. The windows, I I noticed this morning, they was putting in the last one that's in the courtroom. They're looking really good, so those should be completed by the end of this month. That was the deadline that that they were given, so hopefully they will be completed by the end of this month. The color change in lights, if you've noticed the courthouse at night, it looks a little different. So those color change in lots will be able to color coordinate with different holidays and and things of that nature. They will have someone here from that company Wednesday to program those lights so that that will all work out. So we'll meet them there and they're going to educate the maintenance department on how that all works. The carpet and the painting in the courtroom, that's been completed. They still have a little bit of tidying up to do there, but it's all done. The blinds, we should have those ordered and they should be in in a week or so hopefully and get those blinds up, the blinds that's vertical there now, they'll be changed to roll blinds, so it'll all look a lot better and be new. The electrical part of it's about ninety-five percent done. Think a little bit out front is what's lacked and that's about it. The landscaping is is on its way, so there's landscaping being done, the gutter drains for the building was installed in there, that's been covered up, so there'll be some landscaping goes along eighteen north there, so that'll be taken care of in a short fashion. At the jail, I had told you it's the last time we met that we were still waiting on parts, all the parts for the heating system there are heating and cooling system. They have come in and been installed and all of it's up and going like it's supposed to be. The same thing with Wilkes Community College, we were still waiting on parts there and that has been taken care of. Transfer facility, we had four point oh six tons of co-mingle. We had six point one oh tons of cardboard. We had eight point eight three tons of scrap metal which yielded the county twenty-one hundred eighty dollars and twenty cents. That's since the bottoms fell out of scrap metal, so we're holding a couple of loads, but I think we're going to have to take them on anyway and just get what we can out of them. The retaining wall's back up, so we're working towards getting the catwalk in. The disaster pile that was on the old landfill, all that's gone. So we're getting all that smoothed up and straightened up and we was completed with that before the deadline ended. So we got that all took care of from the state, so the state has a temporary permit and the before it ran out on the ninth of April, we had everything completed. So the only thing that's lacking now, and we just had to have it graded so that there was no standing water if it rained. So now we're going to smooth it on out a little more as it dries out and then we're going to seed it and have it all looking really good, hopefully in a month or so. Also, we had to purchase a truck for the landfill or the transfer facility, rather. When Hurricane Helene happened, there was so much water that it collapsed our retaining wall and the retaining wall actually fell on the the road tractor that pulls the trailers out of the pit, so it finally broke and we had to do something, so we found a used truck and we've got that all in place and then this is working out really well. So then we have the flagpole at the college. BDC and library, that's all in and it's completed except for the flag. Flag is ordered and we should have it hopefully this week, so that is all in place and looks really good, I think. So then we have the great flood of two thousand twenty-five at TMS base. So Tuesday of last, we had the sprinkler system, one of the down pipes for the sprinkler head ruptured, it busted, sheared it off. It was a one-inch line that came off of an inch and a half line, it was a T that was about a foot from a two-and-a-half inch line, so at at ninety to a hundred ten pounds of pressure through a one-inch line, it ran a lot of water very quickly. So it flooded the entire base all the way out to the truck bay. We have flooring that's been tore out, Servpro's been here, they're drying the drying it out. We've got two of the bedrooms put back together, so all that's good. Shout out to Allegheny Inn for allowing us to send the crew out there that that Tuesday night to have a place to sleep. We we was in a a direct and in a bind, so John really helped us out with that and we're very thankful for Allegheny Inn for for allowing us to be there for that for that one night. So the adjusters been and working towards getting everything fixed back up. The flooring has had to come out of my office, out of the back computer room and then all of the VCT tile in the building will have to come out. There's water under all that, the glue's turned loose and a lot of it's loose, so we've got to refloor the whole building except for the truck base. So we're working towards that, we went to Lowe's and got some carpet to get the bedrooms put back together. As everybody knows, we have people that live there twenty-four hours a day. So they needed a place to sleep, so we got that fixed back for them. And all of that's been taken care of and I'll keep the board updated as to our progress. Animal control, we had two assisting the sheriff's department, we had six well checks, nine dogs and or cats picked up, thirteen run at large. We have four attacks and only one had to be quarantined, others was quarantined in place. Ninety-two hours, thirty-five calls and five hundred and eighty-five miles. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions? Is the, go ahead, go ahead.
David and his crew have done a remarkable job of recovering from this thing very quickly to have the two bedrooms already, you know, ready to be utilized, has been amazing and you got Servpro in there and you have, I'm sure you got other folks in there too, but we're hoping Servpro will make it like it never happened.
That's right.
They're saying, but good, good job, Dave. Sorry, but.
Is the courthouse, I believe they said June was the final finish up, is that still intact?
In our our last meeting, I requested that they be completed by the end of April. Now, whether that all falls in or not, you know, that's yet to be seen, but they are striving to work towards the end of April being completed. So hopefully that'll be the case.
That's great.
Landscape, go ahead, Bill.
That's all I see.
What kind of landscape are you going to do beside the courthouse on eighteen?
Well, they had to dig it up, so there'll have to be new mulch put down and there'll be some some other stuff that will be replanted and fixed up in there, so.
I just thought it looked better, in the wintertime, them flowers look terrible there, dead.
It does, so my plan from this point going forward is to remove all the dead stuff. That way it it won't be as unsightly.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I gotta say too, you guys acted quickly on that water deal up there, that was a hundred and fifteen gallon a minute, I just think about that, you got a thousand gallons there in better than ten minutes.
Yeah.
Takes a little time to get things organized, cut off and stop the bleeding, but y'all done a great job.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on down. Item C, review of waste info, Rita?
Yes, I passed out a flyer that actually Lindsay in our tag office created for us. And revaluation is getting underway, they will be beginning in the Pony Creek area owner about May the fifth with the field reviews. So preparation for the twenty twenty-seven revaluation is currently underway and every property in Allegheny will be visited by an appraiser of Vincent Valuation Firm. The field reviews are conducted to ensure that the data of the property reflects accurately on your county tax records. Part of this review, all residential and commercial properties will be digitally photographed to ensure that we're able to pick up all the improvements and that they are compared consistently and uniformly as well as to validate the property addresses and locations which assist with emergency services. The appraisal staff will be driving vehicles with door magnets that have the county seal on them and they identify them as Allegheny County Appraisal. All appraisers will be wearing a safety vest, they will have a photo lanyard so that property owners can ask for photo ID. They may be knocking on the door to advise the owners that they're there, if they need to get out of the vehicle and do any measuring, they will knock on the door, talk to the owner or occupant, tell them what they're doing as far as measuring any new improvements there. If no one is home, they may leave a door hanger asking for information, updated information. And if there's any questions about the person who's at your property, please call the tax office, three three six, three seven two, eight two nine one. And of course, tax office staff will be working very closely with the appraisal firm who is out in the field. We're doing something new this year, so about two weeks prior to them starting, which will be in the next week, we're sending out a postcard to postal boxes, post office box in residence to let them know that someone will be there and and what they what they need to do, it's basically the information in your handout. And again, if there's any questions, just contact the tax office and we'll be glad to, glad to help.
Let me put on the county Facebook page also, it should be.
So the information that I've handed out to you is on the county Facebook page and we will keep it updated as to what area they're working in and when.
What if somebody's got their land posted?
They will not go onto posted land this year, it will be to the property owner to contact us or we will use the information that we have in the office, which will be our aerial photographs to assess the property.
Honey, we have any further questions?
No questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This was, I don't know if you caught this at the beginning of what she said, but her staff created this. So we didn't have to pay money to the outside world to make this happen, so. Yeah, we appreciate that.
We do. Okay, moving on down to general business, all this is for action, Rita, you're up again, equalization.
You'll find the minutes from the four eight twenty twenty-five Board of Equalization and Review hearing and at that meeting was Bill Osborne, Greg Walker and Bobby Irwin.
Motion on this to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion here, second. Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on down to item three, budget amendment for the lottery grant received, Robert Hamilton.
Yes, we need to do a budget amendment for the lottery funds for Sparta Elementary School, it's just pass-through funding.
Your motion? Your motion, here, second. Got a motion, second, any further discussion? Not on favor? Five oh.
And then the next budget amendment we have is for Allegheny in motion to have the proceeds added in so that they're able to use them.
Motion to approve, second. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
Okay, and then we also have just a a transfer to get the utility expenses covered for the BDC.
We heard a request, we hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
A motion, a second, any discussion? Not on favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Shep, you want to address item six?
Sure. I had a good conversation with Paula Moore, the president of our local hospital and we just wanted to make sure that in the there was some confusion in the communication that occurred regarding the waiver of the of the fees and the hospital did not request a waiver of those fees, the hospital's doing really well financially. Want to make sure everyone knows that it was actually requested by a contractor. And in the confusion, we thought it was a hospital request, so it's our fault, my fault. But we've corrected it and there's no request for waiver of fees.
Appreciate that. Next, Bill, you're up again, confirmation, Bill Shepley.
Yes, sir, um, oh, we need to do the oh, yeah, that's right. So, Mr. Chairman, we need a confirmation vote from the board to make you a member of the Blue Ridge Opportunity Commission. So.
We need a motion on that?
Need a motion.
Motion, motion to confirm vote for Chairman Bill Osborne appointment to be brought aboard.
Okay.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? All righty, we'll just keep us rolling there.
Okay, yes, sir. So the main thing that's been that's been happening is the budget meetings. Usually three or four a day, for the last few weeks, we've we've gone through that, so we've actually finished phase one, which was a review of meetings with each department head with April and I, and we've moved on to phase two, which included meeting with the larger departments that included Bill Osborne and Timmy Upitz. And we've completed those those reviews. What's going to happen next is we will finish, we still have some cuts that need to occur for us to have a balanced budget. So April and I are working on those those cuts that that we we think are appropriate. We will, once we get to a balanced budget, we'll present it to the full board for your review. We'll open up the floor, after that, open up the floor for public comments. After we get final public comments, then it'll come back to the board again for for your final approval. And at that point, I'm, I would like to request from the local newspaper the opportunity to explain the strategy behind the budget in the paper so that our citizens can see why we're spending the money that we've we've agreed to, what the goal of the goals are associated with that strategy and make sure that it's clear to them what our priorities are and what we think the priorities are that we heard from them. And so that they can, if they need any clarification, they can ask questions about that. So budget process is the the biggest thing going on right now. Any questions about the the budget process I just described?
We're going to have a budget workshop at some point?
Yeah, what we'll do when we when we finish getting what we what we balanced budget, we'll be bringing it to you, it may be several workshops. It's really up to you all. And we'll dig in and we'll show you those areas that we cut. So that if you say, well, we, you know, we don't want you to cut that area, if you want to bring something back, you have the opportunity to do that, but it gives you a document which you can, it gives you a target to look at and say, okay, this is your, our proposed balanced budget, what about this or what about that, is that still going to be addressed in the budget? And you can get into the more detail, and if we need to, we can invite a manager or a director to come back in before you and explain why they need something, explain it to you, all the board members. So we can have as many budget workshop meetings as the board requests. Sir, any other questions about the budget?
We have a public hearing.
Yeah.
In the process, right?
Right, uh-huh.
Do it till June.
That's right, and we've got to go through and have you all, you know, take a look and see if you're in agreement with the way it exists at that moment. And obviously, you know, when we present it to the public, the public might have some comments that change your opinion or make you want to make a change, so there's a chance for you to change again, change the budget again based on public opinion. Okay. Just a couple of other things. I attended the community leaders council luncheon at Old Bo and that was great, there was probably There was probably a hundred people there, our chairman was there also and, um, we got to hear from the new leader, uh, it's K, uh, Katie, Katie Myers, yeah. Yeah, and, uh, we, we're in good hands with her as the, the leader, we, we also heard from her, uh, CFO and their strategy's very sound and we should, the people of the, this area should be pleased with the leadership that we're, we're getting from that, that group. Um, I also attended along with, uh, with Greg and Bill, um, the, uh, con, the contest awards for the elementary schools, they submitted, uh, projects related to, uh, wetlands. And it was, uh, they were impressive and, uh, we enjoyed getting a chance to, to hear from the kids.
Hosted by our local soil and water.
Yes, that's right, yeah, thank you for reminding me, hosted by the local soil, soil and water division. Um, and that is, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on down, commissioner comments, give me.
Um. Dang, I had to, talking about, I lost it there a minute, but, um, yeah, so, so not a lot, just, um, I think we got the apple pie festival coming up soon, what date is that? May third, so that's before our meeting. Um, so yeah, that's coming up, remind people about that. Also, I hope everybody has a wonderful Easter vacation. It's about time, you know, springtime and stuff, things are going to get to hopping here soon, the, the budgets, the information, the meetings, uh, all the things that take place this time of year, but again, appreciate all the work that Mr. Shepley and April's done in trying to put all this stuff together and to remind people, like when you use the word cut, it's not really cut from last year, it's basically the cut from, uh, what people want, you know? Because nobody, nobody really ever gets cut, you know? But, well, most of the time, I'll say that, but I, I do want to point that out, but yeah, I'm excited about getting to the end of that one more year. Um, other than that, thank again David and staff for everything they've done to get that, the MS, uh, building back in shape and that's a pain, I know, I've dealt with that myself sometimes and that's a real pain and y'all have done really fast work there, so appreciate that. Other than that, that's all I got.
Great.
I, everybody, hope everybody had a good Easter, appreciate all the county employees, the county manager.
And let's enjoy the warm weather while we got it.
Harrison. Uh, don't have a whole lot to add to that, uh, hope everybody had a, a good Easter weekend as well. Um, just take a moment to thank, uh, Mr. David Spicer again for a very thorough report on the facilities update. Um, got a lot going on and a lot of different projects, so, uh, thank you for your diligence and all of that. And, uh, glad to see all the commissioners got the memo to wear blue today.
Think I got.
It's Carolina blue.
Y'all must have dreamed it.
I think everybody had a great Easter this year, the weather cooperated and everybody was able to get out early and, and celebrate. Uh, just to, one thing I've been reading on the, uh, or he, hearing on the news is about this real ID that needs to be completed by, I believe, May the seventh. This isn't something new that just hopped up, this was started fifteen or twenty years ago, it's just been put off. And I think it was President Biden that said, May the seventh of twenty-twenty-five would be the final date. So that's coming up here in a few weeks. And it's my understanding that you have to go through DMV and you have to provide certain documents. My question is, our DMV up here is just open two days a week. I don't know how many people already have this or how long it's going to take for people in the county to get it. But I don't know if we need to be asking DMV if possibility for more dates if we start seeing backlogs and lines. My understanding, once you provide everything, it can take a few weeks or a few months to finally get your new ID. And, well, I, I'm just going by what it says, you know, you can't believe everything you read. But some federal buildings are going to require it. And I think for veterans, they need to be very cognizant of this new requirement. If they have to go into a federal building, uh, if it be a VA facility or whatever, they have, apparently have to have this new form of identification. So I, I'd just like everybody to be aware of that. Upcoming is the fried apple pie, uh, festival, that's I guess our kickoff for the year, for the, for the fairgrounds. I know maintenance has been up there and done some great work, fairgrounds is starting to come to shape. Few, few more trees cut down will be in good shape and get that parking lot smoothed out for all these vendors. Hopefully, we're going to have a great big crowd like we have in the past. Courthouse is looking a mess, but that mess is all coming together, it's going to be beautiful when it's finished. Now, I'd like to thank everybody that's been involved in that maintenance and everybody, uh, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bobby, I don't have much to add, but just, David, you relay to your employees what a great job they've done up there, I mean, that really is impressive. And all the rest of the county employees, everybody does a great job and, and apple pie festival, May the third, everybody playing on that. All I know, everybody's planting taters last Friday, cause it's a good Friday. Pretty weekend, nice Easter. Anybody else got anything to say, Heather, Bill, Rita?
I'm going to the journal.
Motion a second, all in favor, thank y'all.
Thank you.
What are you seeding anyway? What are you seeding, your yard?